Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 14, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. This time I'd like to ask our legal, Ms. Altman, to swear in our new member, please.
I, Milton Cluitt.
I, Milton Cluitt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And Constitution in large.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent.
All the duties incumbent.
On me.
On me.
As a Planning and Zoning Commission.
As a Planning and Zoning Commission.
For the parish of Ascension.
For the parish of Ascension.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. Thank you. This time, let the record show that all members are present except for Commissioner Dumas. And item number four, acceptance of the minutes from the May 17, 2010 special Planning Commission meeting. Any questions?
Some move.
They're moved by, let's see, Commissioner Bob and seconded by Commissioner Marshon. Any objection? Motion carries. Acceptance of the minutes from the June 9, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. Any comments, questions?
Some move.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Nance, seconded by Commissioner Marshon. Any opposition? Motion carries. Acceptance of the minutes from the June 9, 2010 Joint Planning and Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Marshon, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right. Public comment period. This time, open up the floor for public comment for any item not on the Planning Commission meeting agenda. No one wishing to comment. Public comment period is closed. One little point of order, I would just make sure members of the audience are aware that the powers trailer park has been deleted from the agenda. So if you're here for that item, just be advised that it has been pulled from the agenda. All right. Public hearing to consider the following minor subdivisions. James Landry property tracks B1, A1 through B1, A6, and L1.
James Faugou representing Mr. James Landry on the following simple division, asking the commission for approval.
James, you've seen all the comments from the staff?
Yeah. The only one that hasn't been addressed yet is the naming of the road.
Okay.
I just saw them.
No comments or questions at this time. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one question on the utility, our proposed utility servitude in the back of those lots. Are they going to do that?
Yeah, that's not a problem. Where in the rear of those lots?
Yeah. It's not indicated.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a problem. There's plenty of room back there.
That's.
That was one of the comments?
Yeah, that was on comment seven. Additional rear of those properties needs to be a dedicated utility servitude.
Okay. Not a problem.
I have a question, staff. Is that a utility servitude or a drainage servitude?
Because you've got utilities in the front.
The back of those lots, it's on, the Department of Health and Hospital comments on number seven is to drain the, I guess.
The sewer.
The sewer.
Yeah.
Would that be a drainage servitude or a utility servitude?
The, well, drainage servitudes are an accepted location for the discharge from sewer by the DHH. If it's a parish maintained drainage servitude, then that's where the, that's as far as they have to take it.
So what do we, do we need to make it a utility servitude or a drainage servitude?
A drainage servitude.
Okay, would that be a problem?
No, not at all.
Oh. Looking at the wrong.
So, James, what kind of road does Mr. Landry propose to build?
She's going to build whatever the parish requirements are to build the road.
But they're asking for a variance from the requirements.
I'm sure it's going to be concrete road within the standards.
A concrete road, but.
Asphalt, concrete.
And.
I would assume that's it. He's not here. He's working offshore tonight.
And the, Ben, you want to?
Sorry. Yeah, I was a little bit lost there. The utility servitude is fine for the sewer to be in.
Okay.
From the residences.
Yeah, but he was wanting to answer.
Okay. I was still looking at the other two lots down at the bottom there.
Okay, but the standards, the standards require curb and gutter?
On 50th.
For street? Staff?
For minor subdivision, yes.
Any other comments, questions?
I'm back on that same one. What variance are they requesting on that servitude passage?
It's not fronting on a public road is what it used to be.
Correct. Thank you.
And on the plat, they have a variance to the road improvements written on the plat. So they would be requesting a variance to the road improvements.
Well, that's not very specific.
Okay, so.
It's kind of hard to round variance when you don't know what they're asking for.
They'd have to request a certain section number and whatnot. And we can tell you what section number that is right now if we.
Okay. When I was reading through, and I was working, my fault, I was working off the small plat, okay? So I couldn't read all the fine print. So I was thinking what was required was a curb and gutter street in this instance. So are you saying that they've already gotten a variance for that?
They're requesting the variance here. This is a variance that can be requested at the Planning Commission because it's in the subdivision code. So that, it's a variance the Planning Commission can grant.
But is it going to be built to parish standards?
That's what the variance is for. We used to ask for variance of fronting on a public road. Now we can't ask for variance on a public, subdivision on a public road. We have to ask for variance of the required, what's it called? Conditions, what's it called? Improvements to a private servitude.
Well, I think the point that's being asked and it's not being addressed is specifically, what are you going to build? What would be the dimensions?
It's either going to be an asphalt road.
I think we need to know that. But is it going to be 10 feet wide, 60 feet wide?
I would think whatever the minimum width that the parish requires them to build. Again, it won't be curb and gutter, but it'd be a minimum width that was suitable for the lots.
Well, I think those, in a variance request, that needs to be specified out so we all know what we're granting.
Or not.
Correct.
I mean, personally, my thoughts are, this is rental, the application said they want to put rental property on here, but they're asking for a variance for the street. And my personal thoughts are, this is, this is not a hardship. It's not, I don't see a reason for the variance. If the requirements are a curb and gutter street or whatever the requirements are, that's what we need.
You have a comment, Ricky?
Historically, this would have been submitted as a simple division with a variance. You're asking a lot of questions that we would always ask as staff as to what is a simple division with a variance. They were granted without any knowledge on your behalf of what was going to be constructed in that private servitude of access. They were granted regularly for years. When our subdivision ordinance revisions were defeated at the council, staff made the determination that simple divisions with a variance weren't in our code per se. We needed to address them as minor subdivisions. And if you're a minor subdivision of property that does not front on a public road, you need to request variances from those sections of the code that you don't have any intention of doing. Because right now, if he's going to do a minor subdivision that subdivides property into six lots that fronts on a private servitude, we don't have standards in the code for what has to be constructed in that servitude of access. It says a 20-foot road surface on a 24-foot road bed. What does that mean? Is it limestone on dirt? Is it concrete on subbase? Is it asphalt? Is it curb and gutter? There's no standards for what that construction is. What we're saying as a staff is a minor subdivision that doesn't front on a public road needs to answer those sorts of questions. And it's a difficult position to put the applicants this month because they got caught in the middle. Had the subdivision ordinance been approved, this would have met that below five-lot criteria, blah, blah, blah. We would have gone through that process. But it was defeated. We decided to let these guys come through and let the commission have their time to react to these applicants.
Well, I have a question for you, Ricky. Let's say that we grant this undefined variance, and it's a narrow little road, okay? Not up to quote unquote, "our standards." There's a fire back there and the fire department can't get a vehicle back in there to address the fire, the emergency. Where does the liability lie? Because we granted a variance.
I don't know how it's different than the family partitions or simple divisions with a variance that you've granted in the past because all of those have been granted with no specific criteria for what's constructed within those servitudes of access. The code simply says a 20-foot surface on a 24-foot road bed, but we don't even have a mechanism to go out and check to make sure they're doing that before we issue COs. There's just, there's nothing in the code that, there's no driveway permit, there's nothing that triggers us to go out to ensure that those things are even constructed. And so we need to work to get that in place. And do we want to hold up people until we get that? Or do we want to continue to do things the way we've always done them?
I understand your point, just that this has all the makings of Pandora's box and I think it's open. I mean, the ordinance you just got defeated was a step towards trying to clean up some of this. But it's almost like our hands have just now been tied or we're putting the parish in a position of knowingly putting the parish in a position of liability, and I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of difference between rental property and family partitions too. I mean, I know what, I know you're saying they're wanting the same, but to me, they're not anywhere close.
Well, I can guarantee the surface is going to be a 20-foot surface, not a 24-foot bed.
But James, how do you guarantee that?
Well, you could make a stipulation, the road has to be to that. If it's not to that standard, you can defeat. It won't be approved.
Approve with that, can I say? That's the only way to do it. Define the condition.
That way it meets the standards of that road. Whatever it would, it will be 20-foot surface with a 24-foot bed.
Do we know, do we know that that's actually going to be built that way? Ricky's just said that we have no way to go out and check that.
But once you make the stipulation, if one of your guys, Vern, or one of them goes out there and it's not built to that standards, no permits whatsoever, it's null and void. Can't do anything with the property.
As long as I put on the plat.
Okay.
Are you agreeable to it going on the plat like that?
Yeah, I mean, if my client's not agreeable, then it's falling in the water. I don't think you'd have a problem with it whatsoever. I mean, I don't know if y'all went out to the property. You can see that he kind of put a cover down and everything. It's 20-foot wide as it is.
Is your client here tonight?
No, he's not. He's offshore.
In all fairness, rather than putting James on the spot, why not defer it to give James time to just talk with his client and then come back to us next month with answers to these questions?
Yeah, the road and the drainage.
I was told that this was the last month it was going to be a stipulation to allow this until everything got cleaned up, so.
And my question would be, what are we, what kind of precedence are we setting by either way? If we approve or deny, what kind of precedence are we setting? Because we don't know, with the master plan issues going on, and what if we can't get our subdivision ordinance, you know, approved by the council? You know, I don't know what their holdup is. I don't know what's going on with it now, now that they denied it. So who knows how long it's going to be before it is passed.
Legal, if we defer this, wouldn't he still fall under whatever is going on right now? So it doesn't make any difference what happens before or after. It's what is happening tonight, what is in place tonight. So if we defer it, you'd still have the.
Well, I mean, is the issue the road? Because I mean, if my client, if I go back, call him tonight and say, no, I ain't building a 20-foot road, then it stops dead in his tracks right there. So I mean, if you make a motion to approve contingent upon we putting the 20-foot service, 24-foot bed on the plat, he signs and agrees to it. It has to be done to those standards. So there's no need to defer it if that's the issue of what he's going to build for a road.
Yeah, but I kind of agree with Sherry. I mean, we're setting a precedent here, what's going to happen in the future until the subdivision ordinance is approved.
And that can be years.
Well, that's the question. Are we going to unfairly keep people from using their land until we get this legal issue out?
Well, I've got a question about, we did kill, or we didn't kill, the council killed that, but there's still a mechanism in place, isn't there, Ricky? Doing business like we've been doing it.
That's what this is. And we have drafted a letter that we're going to circulate to you guys. Fortunately, next month, we have no minor subdivisions that have been submitted. So we have a little lead time here. We've drafted a letter that we're going to send out to all the interested engineers, surveyors, the parties that have been participating in this process that explains how the division of properties are going to proceed. And the letter defines six sections of the code that if you're going to do these simple divisions with a variance, we're calling them minor subdivisions moving forward, there's six sections you need to request a variance from. Road standards, construction standards, drainage requirements, construction and design standards for drainage, sanitary sewage, utility standards, and you must comply with the hardship standard, the variance section. Is there a legitimate hardship for why you don't need to do these other things that are required of a minor subdivision?
But if I do the 20-foot and the 24-foot, I wouldn't be asking for a variance. But that's the variance I'm asking for right now.
Yes. Because you're not building a curb and gutter street that meets the parish cross-section standards.
So, but I'm meeting the size requirements, it's just not the curb and gutter.
The size requirement is simply something that's extracted out of the family partition section.
Sounds good.
There's no construction standards within a private servitude of access other than a 20-foot road on a 24-foot road bed within a private servitude on family partitions. That's it.
Well, and we have applied family partition standards to simple divisions before, and you told us stop doing that.
Right.
Okay.
What we're saying is, if he's requesting a variance from the road construction standards, he's saying, I'm not going to build this road, I'm going to build this road. And that's what we're educating the surveyors. You need to tell us, I'm not doing a drainage study because of X, Y, and Z. I'm not building the parish mandated road cross-section. I'm going to build this. The reason I'm building this is, for whatever reason. They need to describe that, and it needs to meet the hardship definitions. Why can't you build us a parish road for these lots that don't front on an existing parish road? It's not simply dividing property on a private servitude of access anymore.
And in this case, it is for profit. It is a rental property for profit.
So whether or not you guys agree with the hardship, and that's the other thing, is we're going to require the hardship letters to explain why they need to do all that. And if you don't agree with the hardship letters, that's up to y'all to defeat those. We didn't feel it was fair because of the timing of all these, to hold these three items up. And once again, we didn't even make a recommendation for two of them. We basically said these were submitted as simple divisions with a variance. Had this been two months ago, these would have flown through, literally, because of the way the process had been going. Front on a private servitude, it meets the width based on the requirements in the family partition section of so many lots and being this wide, they were going through. The mechanism we were trying to create to make them legal got defeated, so now we're defaulting back to what our code says. And our code says, any subdivision less than 19 lots, it's not a family partition, is a minor subdivision, and a minor subdivision has to meet all the criteria in the code.
Which means they must have a hardship in order to get a variance, and I see no hardship.
There's no hardship if you're going to rent it.
Because it's not a family partition, and this is strictly a for-profit move, and from looking at the amount of land here, there are other ways to arrange this, and thereby they would not have this criteria.
The hardship letters in the past simply stated, I have a hardship of subdividing my land because it doesn't front on a public road. And that was what the hardship letters stated.
Ricky, the hardship letters were only supposed to apply to family partitions, never to simple divisions of property with a variance. Just family partitions.
We've been submitting those for five years.
And when the engineers and surveyors started doing that for the other, the commission simply accepted, but that was never, it never was intended originally for that. It was simply for the family partitions.
Yeah, I think y'all just had one printed out and you gave it to everybody, didn't you?
No.
That's what they look like.
There's two or three of them that had form letters, yes, that they would let them fill out.
No, it wouldn't. But I mean, there is a hardship on the property. You know, he's limited to, he can't build across the pipeline, across the ditch and stuff like that. He's limited to what he can do. This will never be switched ownership of the property. It ain't like he's trying to subdivide and sell the property, he's keeping it for income investment for him and his family. And he is limited across the front of the property, and this is, was a cross-mix-use corridor property, and it does meet with the area of the property. There's rental property in the back, there's rental property in the side, there's rental property across the street.
I don't know if I necessarily agree. To me, this is prime property. This is facing Highway 44. This is prime commercial property that.
Family property.
Well. But it could be, I mean, I don't want to see anything happen to anybody, but something happens to the owner, the kids could sell it, you know, if they couldn't agree, they could sell it, it could be a subdivision. So.
Well, you can't foresee the future. He could live to 100 and some years old.
Absolutely, you're right.
Well, really, though, what's happening on each side of the property is not the point. We're not discussing that. We're talking about, we're talking about this property. And the qualifications for hardship are pretty, pretty specific.
No, it's mixed use.
And I believe if I remember correctly, the way it's, the, it states in there that there cannot be any monetary gain from the variance being granted. Isn't that how one of them stated, Howard?
I don't.
I don't have it in front of me, and I can't remember. Y'all got it with everything, every item that came up before the Board of Adjustments, they had the whole criteria spelled out there.
Yeah, but I don't like to try to quote things like that from memory because every time I do, I get it wrong.
I've got it. It is not sufficient, there must be a showing of unnecessary hardship commentary. It is not sufficient proof of hardship to show that greater profit would result if the variance were granted.
That sounds right to me.
You agree now, huh?
Well, I don't like to quote things like that that I don't have written in front of me.
Well, I'll make the motion to deny. I don't believe it meets the requirements, the hardship requirements. I think it would be showing special favor on the homeowner.
I second it.
All right. Have a motion to deny by Commissioner Sloman, seconded by Commissioner Barre. Any opposition? Item number 8B, Kenneth Jackson property, tracks D1, D2, D3, and D4.
Good evening.
Hi.
Wow. Clint Quatmal representing WJ Quatmal Surveyors, asking for the commission's approval on the minor division, which I wish was a minor division or a simple division with a variance.
Comment number one says, please state the status of the non-conforming mobile home. Will it be removed?
It has, the client is here, and he has also informed me it has been moved onto his sister's lot, which is to the east, Christina Jackson.
I don't necessarily think that decision was a one, one decision fits all situations in reference to your, the wow that you said. I think that your piece of property is a different shape, a different situation, and each one we'll have to look at individually.
Right. If I would have known that the council turning down the cleanup of the ordinances, I would actually showed up in person. I went to the strategic planning meeting, it seemed to go well, everybody seemed to agree with it, and then the council suddenly shut it down. I would have certainly went if I would have known that it would have caused this kind of confusion. There's absolutely a need to clean up the regulations because here we are trying to juggle something again that we're now unsure of again. And it seems to happen quite often as we're trying to clean things up. We are very unsure, and it's hard for us as professionals to explain to our clients what's required. And if they need to put out hard-earned money in this economy, to take a chance because essentially it's what it is when we don't know what the current regulations simply are, and they keep changing on us month to month. It's just, it comes impossible to explain to a person coming into your office, you know, that this is a gamble, you're gambling your money because we have no clear regulations. So I mean, obviously, I know there is a need to clean this up so that we won't all have this, this type of confusion.
Any questions, comments by commissioners? No comments, questions at this time. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any questions, comments by commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a question about the 30-foot private all-purpose servitude of passage. I thought we quit doing that.
That's how it was labeled on the previous plat. It was approved that way, and that's the only reason I show it.
Yeah, because I noticed a little bit further down, whichever direction, to the north of there on, you got part of that 30-foot is a 10-foot utility and drainage servitude.
Existing.
So basically, we have a 20-foot servitude of passage that, okay, that's included on
What does your client intend to put on these properties? A skinny house or a mobile home?
Mobile homes on some. If he, if he, I know he's building on the first one because of the least amount of commerces. So if he chooses to build a, a small house that requires, I'm assuming at that point in time, he will go to the Board of Adjustments with his house layout and show them and ask for a variance, whether it be on the rear or on the front of those, because they are tremendously encumbered by setbacks.
But there is truly some hardships here based on how narrow this whole tract of land is.
And although those lots are like that from east to west along that area.
Right, and I agree, Howard, because that's why I was saying, this is a different situation.
Absolutely.
And they all are one-acre lots. And they all are one-acre lots.
Any other comments, questions? What is recommendation of the commission?
Well, I would like to, like a motion this be approved as written, due to the very unique dimensions of the tract of land, there's, this is probably about the best that can be done to permit usage of said land.
Second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Dalton, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number 8C, Lewis White Properties, tracks 10A1A1 and 10A1A2.
Good evening, my name is Dave Fizikas with Benchmark Group, I'm here representing Mrs. Ellis, who is present, and I'm gonna try very hard not to say wow. So, if we, if we can, this is a one-acre site, Miss Ellis owns 13.89 acres, and she is building a new house on the property. She wants to create a one-acre tract for mortgage purposes only, she is gonna continue to have ownership on the remaining portion of her property. I don't know if you had an opportunity to go out and take a look at the property, there is a bridge at the end of Lewis White Road that is not, does not belong to the parish, it's not under parish magnets, it does limit the size of the road, the construction of the road going into the property. You have to go through a gate with the code immediately after you cross the bridge, and then to get to Mrs. Ellis' property, you have to go through another gate with a different code. So traffic on this road is extremely limited, and we're asking for approval of this one-acre
Any questions, comments by commissioners? No comments at this time, open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment, public hearing is closed. What is the wish of the commission?
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Nance, seconded by Commissioner Dalton. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine, committee reports subdivision ordinance committee, since you're on the hot, hot, the hot seat.
We did meet last month, we did, but we did not have a forum for the second month in a row. We're gonna try again this month, last Friday of the month, at 9:00, you'll be there? Okay, maybe we can get a forum this month. We're just gonna continue working on some things that we've been working on for a while.
And I encourage commissioners that are not on a committee, obviously, we'd be, we'd love to have you on, on one of the two committees, let me know if you can be a member. Mr. Cluwatt?
I'll serve on one of them.
All right, and we'll talk after the meeting, we'll see what the most strategic is for you at this time. Thank you. Okay, item number 10's been deleted, so item number 11.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, we are adjourned, short recess, and as soon as Lester can get the tape rewound, we'll convene and get right into zoning.